Meeting for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. I have a roll call, Secretary Pistana.
Yes, Mr. Weisman. Mrs. Grisimkowski.
Here.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
I am present, Ms. Cotter.
Here.
And Mr. Weisman.
Here.
Present and accounted for.
Thank you. Everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Sanz, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just. Next, we have approval of agenda. I do have one friendly amendment to the agenda that I would like to propose. Under New Business, Section Six, subsection E, petition for reinstatement. I'd like to continue, I'd like to move that up to A under New Business and then move everything else down in the order. So E would become A and then everything would follow in sequence. That would be a friendly amendment. That being said, is there any other changes? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please? Could I have a motion, please? Thank you.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Motion made by Member Dodd, seconded by Member Ryan. Have a roll call, please.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Grisimkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, Section Two, Communications Reports, Items from the Board of President. I have a couple of items that I would like to address. Number one, for those present today, in the back corner, there's a citizens' participation form. If you wish to speak at this board meeting, please fill this out and hand them off to to our Executive Secretary, Mrs. Cattle, or Cadell, excuse me. I'd like to talk about this for just a moment. I'd like to, first of all, thank you for attending our Huron Valley Board of Education meeting. We welcome our HVS community input and comments. A public comment section will be available in Section Three. For, and it will be available for fifteen minutes. That section is for agenda voting items. We will first take any public comments as it relates to voting agenda items. If there are none, I will then take non-agenda, non-voting items for fifteen minutes for people to make comments. After that, we will go on and do the business of the school district. And then the remaining comments that are, that are, that we have, that I will get from our Secretary, will be done in Section Seven, under Public Comments. Each of you will have three minutes to provide those comments. Participants will have those three minutes to present their comments when recognized by the Board of Education President, according to board policy. We are allowed to adjust that down from three minutes. I choose as Board President not to adjust that time. Each of you will have three minutes. This is a time for you to provide those comments. This is not a time for us to get into a conversation. If there are items that are brought to our attention that are appropriate, I will pass them on to Dr. Salah for a response. So that being said, that's the process that we will follow tonight. And I'll check to see if we have anything on agenda items. Do we have anything? We do not have anything on voting items, so I will recognize first five because you have fifteen minutes during that period of time, according to policy. Couple, couple of other items that I have in front of me, I do want to go over. Our Board of Education has standing subcommittees. These standing subcommittees file all open meeting laws, even though we do not have a quorum, even though we do not act on any items during those meetings. We have four standing committees, Executive Committee, Teaching, Learning and Technology, Finance and Operations, Marketing, Communication and Legislation. During the course of the year, we might have other committees. We will follow that same format. I think it's also important to note, since we do file the open meeting laws, we do post these meetings so that the public is aware of them and they certainly are invited. They are usually at our administrative offices on a variety of times and dates. Some of these committees meet twice a month, others meet once a month. The Executive Committee is made up of myself as being Chair, Laura Dodd and Denise Pistana as alternate, is Amy Grisimkowski, and the liaison is Dr. Salah. Teaching, Learning and Technology, the Chair is Denise Pistana, and members are Lindsay Cotter, Jacob Demick, and the alternate is Laura Dodd, and John Travernier is our liaison. Finance and Operation is chaired by Amy Grisimkowski, along with myself being a member and Member Ryan. The alternate is Lindsay Cotter, and our liaison is Jeffrey Van Goghtham. And the last standing committee is Marketing, Communication and Legislation. That is chaired by Laura Dodd, and members are Amy Grisimkowski and Lindsay Cotter, and I am the alternate, and Bob Rothler is our liaison. So those are the standing committees for twenty-three, twenty-four. The other comment that I'd like to make under President's Comment is, I would just like to mention, two weeks ago, it was July third, we had a special meeting in this room. We had one agenda item, and that was for the Board to discuss and to vote on a ratified contract between Huron Valley Board of Education Administration and the HVA, EA. We're pleased to announce, once again, that the Huron Valley Education Association and Huron Valley School Board of Education has approved and ratified a two-year contract. Over the course of several months, the two negotiation teams collaborated to develop a collective bargaining agreement that includes wage increases that have not been seen for a number of years. The new contract focuses heavily on increasing salaries to continue making Huron Valley schools a competitive school district. The ultimate final agreement ratified by our membership can be attributed to hard work on both sides. And those were comments that were reiterated not only by the Board of Education, but our partnership with HVEA. Our HVEA and HVS bargaining teams were committed to collaboration with the focus on the needs of our educators and students at the center of every conversation. Some of the highlights include all educators over the course of the ratified two-year contract will receive at a minimum a ten percent salary increase depending upon their placement on the salary schedule. Additional duty pay for responsibilities outside of the traditional school day was doubled and the salary schedule was condensed to allow HVEA members to reach the highest salary in far fewer years. Huron Valley educators are some of the hardest working people in the state. The Board of Education Administration felt the weight of showing our teachers that we value their professionalism, expertise and work ethics. As a district, we wanted to do all we could to attract and retain talented Huron Valley Education Association members while managing our budget in a physically responsible manner. This is according, is a quote from Dr. Salah and reiterated by myself as spokesperson for the Board. I applaud the efforts of the entire bargaining team and thank the HVEA for their partnership. So with that, I do not believe we have any school presentations. Is that correct, Dr. Salah? All right. Super Tedic comments.
Thank you, President Weisman. Good evening, everybody that's here. Thank you to those who are here watching online. I have a few items this evening to share with all of you, so please bear with me. I have five items in particular. First, I just, again, want to reiterate, there's a tremendous amount of construction that's taking place throughout the community. Our schools, as a result of November twenty nineteen, the passage of a two-hundred-million-dollar bond, the sinking fund, we've been fortunate to be able to do some pretty significant work. All of our elementary schools are largely updated, and this is, you know, a great example of the progress that has been made throughout our schools. You'll see this same quality of lighting, flooring, technology enhancements to help improve the educational experience for our students. You'll see that replicated throughout all of our elementary schools. I had a chance to walk Milford High School today, and it doesn't look anything like this. It's actually sort of complete rubble. But I expect that it's going to look fantastic by the time it's done. If you get a chance, those of you who are here, as you're driving out, if you, if you take a look at the grandstands over at Milford High School, we were able to update those bleacher systems and they just look absolutely fantastic. So we're just really grateful to our, our community for passing that bond. The dollars are going to good work. We have safer facilities. We have classroom environments that are better conducive for learning, and I'm just excited to continue this work as we move forward with, with the bond. So thank you very much. Second, this evening, I received a letter from the Michigan School Board, or Michigan School Business Officials congratulating our very own Gina Maruskin, Maruskin, that is Jeffrey's Executive Assistant. I just want to read to you a portion of what this says. It says, "On behalf of the Michigan School Business Officials, it is my pleasure to inform you that Gina Maruskin has met the requirements for certification under the MSBO voluntary certification program and has earned the Business Official Specialist Certification." I just want to say congratulations to Gina. That was not a requirement of her. She just went above and beyond, outside of the workday, in order to earn the certification. And I just think it's an example of the quality and caliber of employees that we hire throughout, throughout the district. So Gina, if you're, if you're watching this, or if you go back and watch this, congratulations. We appreciate all the work that you do and we, we value you. Thank you so much. Second thing here, I wanted to give a, or third thing, rather, I want to give a shout out to our Community Relations Department. You know, Barb has been with us for a year now, and we have received four awards from the National School Communications Professional Group. Those awards are in the areas of publication and digital media. That is our Education Matters document that we create and send home to families a few times throughout the year. The second is for a video produced with an outside contractor, so that is our kindergarten orientation video. The third award is for distinguished achievement for a quality infographic, and that is the work of our, our strategic plan that was recently passed. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at our strategic plan, it is available on our website. It is quite extensive and provides a lot of details for anybody who's interested in sort of the five-year plan for the district and where we're headed in five key, five key areas. And then the last is overall recognition for social media, just being a social media president. So Barb, congratulations to you and your team. I know you have done a tremendous amount of work and you deserve the recognition. Great job. So third, you know, this is, in large part, I just want to echo some of the sentiments from Mr. Weisman, our Board President. I'm looking at Jennifer Hollander in the audience. You know, truly, Jennifer, thank you to you and Therese. I know our Unicef Director is also here. We want to thank you for your partnership to, to reach a tentative agreement that was ultimately ratified by the HVEA and our Board of Education supporting it in the majority. Attracting, retaining was the key to this contract. And several of my colleagues that are sitting here to the left, many of our co-team members sat on that negotiations team as well. You know, when I started in the district five years ago and spent a lot of time looking at all of our collective bargaining agreements as well as our handbook groups, it was apparent to me that we had some work to do in the space of attracting and retaining. Any member of, of my team over here will tell you that providing our teachers and HVEA members with a significant pay increase needed to be a focus of this administration, and I know it has been a priority of our Board of Education. And that was outlined in the parameters that they set for us when we sat down to bargain in good faith. I just want to walk through some facts and some data related to the last two contracts. I've been here five years. Our last two contracts span a time of, of about four, and these have been our priorities to responsibly and strategically manage our budget so that we can increase wages sufficiently to attract and retain educators to the Huron Valley schools. So over the, the current contract that we are now bringing to a close, it was a two-year contract. Year one, that would have been the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, there was a three percent increase, two-thousand-dollar one-time hazard stipend. If you recall, we were going through COVID at the time, and a half a percent retention bonus. Also, so for our listening audience that isn't familiar with contracts in schools, it's important to understand that for each year of experience, up to a maximum year, a teacher will receive basically an increase for experience. And so that increase percentage in experience is between three-point-two-five and four-point-one-five percent. So the overall increase in twenty-one, twenty-two was roughly between eight-point-eight to twelve-point-eight percent. Year two, the increase was a three percent increase plus steps and lanes for those who qualified for that years, for those years of experience. So that was a range of three percent to seven percent. The total contract was eight-point-eight over the two years, eight-point-eight to nineteen percent, depending upon where you were at in terms of steps and lanes and experience. This latest contract that Mr. Weisman was speaking to has a range of the minimum increase for two years is a ten percent, and the maximum for those who are on steps could see as much as sixteen percent. So I'm really proud that we are, our teachers, our educators are seeing between a nineteen percent and a thirty-five percent increase over the, over the course of those four, four years. It's a tremendous, tremendous increase. Our teachers deserve it. Frankly, they deserve more. And the next time that we sit down to negotiate our contracts, we will be looking at our budgets. We will, we will be looking at our bottom lines. We will be looking at the parameters that our Board of Education establishes, our enrollment data and all of the factors that go into, you know, situating us as a school district from a financial perspective, and hopefully we'll be able to continue to, to do more. I, I think that, I don't think, I know this is already, you know, reaping benefits as it relates to attraction and retention. You know, as of right now, I asked our HR Department this afternoon for the latest numbers as it relates to vacancies. We have, and this is, this is in just the HVEA, it's not in support staff roles. We have seven vacancies district-wide, two in special education, which has been a particularly challenging area to, to attract and retain. And so one of the things I'm grateful to the HVEA for is that we were able to come up with some attraction incentives for some of those really hard-to-fill positions that sit vacant for a long, for a long period of time, and, and that was through collaboration and ultimately coming to an agreement. We still have two social work positions out there, which they're just, they've just been tough to fill. We have two secondary positions district-wide, one in Spanish and one in science. So really, already we've seen significant benefits to the settlement of, of this, of this contract. So again, thank you to our, thank you to our, our union president who's here and the entire negotiating team, as well as the team that represented the administration. You guys did a great job, you know, collaborating, striking the right balance and really doing everything we could to attract and retain employees to the district. So my last item I want to touch on this evening, you know, I've, I've received a number of, of emails from community members, probably twelve or fifteen regarding staffing and placement. And I see a lot of people here in the audience, so I assume we're going to hear a lot of a public comment this evening. So I, I wanted to just speak to this item for, for just a few minutes before we move on in the agenda. So to date, we've had, just for everyone who's in the audience here and for our listening audience at home, to date, we've had about twelve moves from, from various employee groups from across the district. So for some context, Huron Valley Schools has about five hundred roughly teachers. I think it's a little less than that now due to declining enrollment. We have around one thousand to twelve hundred total employees in the district. Huron Valley Schools is the twentieth-largest employer in Oakland County, and it's roughly the twenty-fifth-largest school district in, in the state of Michigan. Movement takes place every single year for a variety of reasons and for a variety of contexts. Those decisions are the responsibility of the Huron Valley Schools. We, we make those decisions based upon what's in the best interest of all schools, and we have context and we have situational awareness regarding a variety of factors that not every single person in the community will know. And it is just a fact of the matter, and we have always had movement from one year to the next, and we will always have movement from one year to the next. I'm not saying people have to agree with every decision that is made in the district, but I am saying that it is a fact of reality in running any large organization that decisions will have to be made. Huron Valley Schools places its employees in positions that serve the best interest of the entire organization based upon that situational context. For some context, placement of employees has not always been the right of the district. And this is important for, I think, everybody in this room to know and understand because not everybody will have this context. So prior to two thousand and twelve, there were two factors that determined where an individual would be placed. One is certification, two is seniority. Those are the only two factors. Basically, when, when I was in education in, in, in two thousand and twelve, and, and prior to that, I remember sitting in a large room, like a, like a Center for Performing Arts, where every staff member was present and any opening that was available was put on a board, and anybody with seniority that had the certification will be placed in, in that position, regardless of, regardless of any context, regardless of who the principal might be, regardless of whether it's a Title I building, a thirty-one A building, regardless of whether the building is a struggling building from a, from an academic perspective where maybe they, they need a highly qualified teacher from another building to come in and support that particular group of students. Regardless of any of those factors, it didn't matter, it's based on seniority. So for some context, in two thousand and twelve, the Public Relations Act three thirty-six of nineteen forty-seven was amended. And here's why this is important. It was amended under Governor Rick Schneider by the Republican Legislature at the time, and they prohibited certain items from being, from being bargained and from being discussed between the district and associations. Now, why is, why is that important? It's important, and I raise that. This is not about politics, but I want to, I want to raise and address this very specifically and directly. I'm just going to share facts with you, and you draw your own conclusions here. Specifically, the Republican Legislature passed these acts. So when I get emails that say, where moves politically driven, well, I will just tell you, the Republicans and the Democrats do not agree on this particular issue. My job is to carry out the expectations, that is our job, of the legislature and the law. And where we have the right to do that, we will say we have the right to do that. So Public Act three thirty-six, Section four-two-three-two-one-five, I'm going to just read to you certain sections here. Collective bargaining duties of employer, public school, collective bargaining is a topic, duties of employer, public school employer and employee representatives prohibit, prohibited subjects between public school employer and bargaining representative of employee and prohibited subjects of bargaining. Section fifteen, a public employer shall bargain collectively with the representative of its employees as described in Section eleven and may make and enter into collective bargaining agreements with those representatives. Number two, a public school employer has the responsibility, authority and right to manage and direct on behalf of the public the operations and activities of the public school under its control. Number three, collective bargaining between a public school employer and a bargaining representative of its employees shall not include any of the following subjects. A, who is or who will be the policyholder of an employee group insurance. That's number one, prohibited subject, can't talk about it. Two, B, establishment of starting date of school year and the amount of pupil contact time required to receive full state school aid under Section twelve eighty-four of the Revised School Code. C, the composition of a school improvement committee established under Section twelve seventy-seven of the Revised School Code. D, the decision of whether or not to provide or allow inter-district or intra-district open enrollment opportunities in a school district or the selection of grade levels or schools in which to allow an open enrollment opportunity. E, the decision of whether or not to act as an authorizing body to grant contract or to organize and operate one or more public school academies. F, the decision of whether or not to contract with a third party for one or more non-instructional support services. G, the use of volunteers in providing services at its schools. H, decisions concerning use of staffing of experimental or pilot programs and decisions concerning the use of technology to deliver educational programs and services and staffing to provide that technology or the impact of those decisions on individual employees of the bargaining group. I, any compensation or additional work assignment intended to reimburse an employee for or allow an employee to receive any monetary penalty imposed under this act. J, any decision made by the public school employer regarding teacher placement or impact of that decision on the individual employee or the bargaining unit. K, decisions about the development, content, standards, procedures, adoption and implementation of the public school employer's policies regarding personnel decisions when conducting a staffing or program reduction or any other personnel determination resulting in the elimination of a position, when conducting a recall from a staffing or program reduction of any other personnel determination resulting in the elimination of a position or hiring of a staffing or program reduction or any other personnel determination. So that's important because in two thousand and twelve, the Republican Legislature took action to pass that law that we operate under today. Just recently, just as recently as June, the Democrat Legislature took action to repeal that act. Insofar as the repeal says that all of those topics are now subject to collective bargaining. I don't think the governor has signed that bill yet, but I have no doubt that the governor will sign that bill. So when we talk about politics, I just think it's important for people to know, this isn't political from my perspective. It's following the law as it exists. I want to read for you the groups who supported the Democratic repeal of the Republican bill. So those who took positions, representatives of the following entities testified in support to repeal the Republican bills. The Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, Bay City Education Association, Dearborn Federation of Teachers, Amtramic Federation of Teachers, Michigan Education Association, Berch Run Education Association, Central Line Education Association, Claussen Education Association, Grand Rapids Education Association, Iona Education Association, Romeo Education Association, Waterford Education Association, American Federation of Teachers, Detroit Federation of Teachers, Galesburg Augusta Education Association, the Michigan AFL-CIO, Michigan Building and Construction Trades Council, Service Employees International Union Michigan, Taylor Federation of Teachers, Saginaw Township Education Association. Representatives of the following entities testified in opposition of the repeal. Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators, Barry Intermediate School District, Branch Intermediate School District, Calhoun Intermediate School District, the Detroit Public Schools Community District, Grand Rapid Area Chamber of Commerce, Jackson Intermediate School District, the K-12 Alliance of Michigan, Lenaway Intermediate School District, Combe Intermediate School District, Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, Monroe Intermediate School District, Oakland Schools, Wayne County Regional Education Services Agency, Education Advocates of West Michigan, the Mackinac Center for Public Policy, Michigan Alliance for Student Opportunity and the Michigan Association of Secondary School Presidents. So I just wanted to provide a little context and a little history because there's a lot of information out there, and unless you've, were around in two thousand and twelve and kind of in this game, you really wouldn't know all of those details. So with that, Mr. President, I will turn over my comment to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your response. Student leadership, do we have any student leadership tonight? Seeing none, association communication, Jennifer?
Good evening. I hope everyone is having a good summer so far. Tonight, like we heard from Dr. Salah and Mr. Weisman, I want to thank the Board of Education for your approval of the HVEA contract. Bargaining was a long and complicated process which started all the way back in November. Our HVEA bargaining team was extremely dedicated and hardworking throughout all of those many months. With over five hundred educators in Huron Valley, you can imagine all of the vast needs and requests that were brought. requests that were brought to our bargaining team. Our team met constantly to analyze these requests, evaluate financial information, staffing and enrollment information, and compare compensation packages from surrounding districts. All of this information was brought into our formal bargaining sessions. Our HVEA and HVS bargaining teams were committed to collaboration and interest-based bargaining. IBB bargaining allowed us to focus on specific items with attracting and retaining our staff as the center of every conversation. Huron Valley's unique financial needs, our declining enrollment, our large geographic size, our base foundation district, and being allocated, being located within Oakland County increased all of those complexities that we had to talk about as we worked towards our common goals. In addition to the significant increases to our salary schedule that Dr. Salah alluded to earlier and a trigger language for a possible wage reopener in 2024, there are so many other exciting, relevant and important language pieces within our tentative agreement. As with every tentative agreement, our needs are great, and as I mentioned the other day, I've already started a list of items to be addressed to years from now when we bargain again. I recognize that all negotiations involve compromises and trying to meet the needs of all 510 educators is exceptionally challenging but extremely important work. Our new contract focuses on attracting new educators and retaining our current educators as it takes outstanding, well-qualified educators who are dedicated to Huron Valley that will inspire and build the futures of our students. But before I end today, it's important to recognize our educators are here tonight to support our colleagues who are being involuntarily transferred. The current law of Michigan gives the right, district right of placement, as you've said, so involuntary transfers regularly happen within our district and in districts surrounding us. I also understand it's a complicated piece to figure out the intricacies of staffing as there are dozens of factors to consider each year when placing our educators into all of the positions. However, every one of these placement decisions deeply impacts our educators and our buildings and our district. The educators sitting here today have come to the valley during summer vacation because they're sad and confused and angry at the thought of two of their own teachers being moved out of Lakewood. The staff in our buildings are more than just colleagues. We become families and like families, we have times that we laugh together, times we problem solve together and times, of course, that we disagree. However, what defines us as a family is that we are always there when people need support. Right now, these educators are feeling like their school family is being broken apart. And although they know that the district has the right to move the staff, it doesn't take away from the questions in their mind about why the decisions are being made and the so strong feelings that are in their heart as they are here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the, next on the agenda is Board Correspondence, Secretary Pusana.
No correspondence this evening. Treasury report. No report this evening.
Reports from, uh, board committees. I have the, uh, the first board report, that is the executive committee. We met on July 12th at the Huron Valley School Administration Building. Meeting was called to order at 12. Present were myself, Member Dodd, Member Pusana, Dr. Salah, uh, Mrs. Wanger and Heather Caddell. Uh, there were no public comments. Discuss the, uh, tonight's regular agenda items as it relates to the board, board meeting tonight, human resource recruitment efforts. Uh, Ms. Wanger shared the current efforts being used by human resources to attract new staff. The committee brainstormed additional ideas to expand these efforts in the coming year. Dr. Salah reviewed current staffing and was pleased to report that vacancies exist in only some of the hard to fill areas such as special education. The new contract signed and adopted, as we mentioned, is already having a positive impact on the new board. Board's contract, which is in front of us today, contract for Fortis Group Security, which provides private security services for several of our schools. And as I said, that contract will be presented tonight for scheduling dates. We had a discussion as it relates to, uh, our community forums that we will continue this semester along with White Lake Valley and our, uh, executive committee. Uh, we also had a discussion as it relates to an ad hoc committee and the potential of, of having an ad hoc committee focusing on recruitment efforts. And we had some discussion as it relates to that and that discussion will carry over to this other, this evening committees as we move forward. The Dodd also discussed the structure of the board liaison roles and the desire to provide board education members with some clarity regarding those roles and responsibilities. And the board discussed the developing initial communication of, you can sit down with building principals at least once a year and walk through the building to see the classroom and the wonderful learning that is taking place in each of those classrooms. Uh, stay tuned and we'll provide some additional detail as it relates to that. And the meeting was adjourned at 2:00. Next is TLT Committee.
TLT has not met, we will meet again August 14th.
Finance and Operations.
Finance and Operations also met on July 12th at 8:02 AM at the Administration Building. Present were Mr. Wiseman, myself, Ms. Ryan, Dr. Salah, Jeffrey Van Goghtham, John Rebe, Heather Kerrigan, Gina Ruskin, Becky Timberlake, Jackie Hilgendorf and Bill Weinrock. There was no public comment. Uh, we reviewed the minutes, um, and then we moved into our regular agenda, which consisted of our consent agenda items, which we will vote on tonight for the road salt purchase. This is our annual purchase of salt to keep us moving. Um, and then we also looked at unfinished business, which would be the Lakeland and Milford High School recreational pool demolition, which is a bulletin to bid pack nine. We'll vote on that this evening along with, uh, the athletic trainer services contract as well. New business, we discussed, um, the Eagle Resolution regarding groundwater. Eagle has asked that HVS approve a resolution acknowledging that we continue to monitor and comply with, um, stormwater terms and conditions at Oak Valley. Huron Valley Schools currently is in compliance and is recommending that the Board of Education review said resolution as presented. The administration will seek approval on August, at the August 14th board meeting. Um, we will also be, uh, discussing fitness center equipment. The, um, committee discussed the bid synopsis and intent to award BSN Sports, um, the approved fitness center equipment supplier in the amount of $156,860.82. Administration will seek approval on the, um, on this particular motion, uh, August 14th. This will be funded out of our capital projects improvement. Bogey Lake Campus Water Easement Agreement. Um, this is in respect to bringing, uh, White Lake City Water to the Lakeland High School Campus. Uh, we are looking at the easement agreement with the township. Um, and as the township will be the owner operator of the water main line and will need access to the Bogey Lake Campus to take care of said line. The committee reviewed the draft easement proposal as well as, um, it has also been reviewed by our legal team. Administration will seek approval on August 14th as well. We, uh, reviewed some safety and security updates. Mr. Van Goghtham informed the committee that Night Watch will take over emergency monitoring of our alarm systems and this is paid for out of general funds. We are anticipating additional funding from the state to keep our munitions dog Rosie and, uh, security firm Fortis for the additional year and potentially more. The budget is due to be signed by the governor, well, in three days. So we're, we're hopeful that that will go through as is. In addition, we also received an update from construction, from, uh, Clark Construction and TMP for big packs five, eight, nine, 10, um, regarding our bond construction. We were reviewing our remaining contingency for each bid packet, package, um, and, uh, we reviewed the communicator reports showing photos of the progress being made at the high schools this summer. Um, board construction walkthrough will be scheduled for August 10th and we're inviting all board members and the Milford High School and Lakeland High School principals to join us on a tour of each building to see the construction updates at the conclusion of our next finance and operations meeting. Elite Detection K9 and Zebra K9, we are in, uh, contract negotiations with them for the fiscal year, school year, uh, 2324. We also reviewed all of the finance and operation committing dates for school year 2324. Future discussion items are free and reduced education form and how that is presented to Huron Valley families. Our meeting adjourned at 9:55 AM. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 10th at 8:00 AM. Please note, we normally meet on Wednesday mornings. This particular meeting will be on a Thursday morning, so please feel free to join us. This is riveting, can't miss television, so please come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Communications, marketing and legislative.
Thank you very much. We have not met. Our first meeting of the new committee will be tomorrow, Tuesday at 3:00 PM at the Administration Building.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Section 3. As I mentioned, this is public comments. Uh, this time is allotted 15 minutes as it relates to, uh, action items. Do not believe we have any action items, so based on board policy, I'm going to allocate 15 minutes, uh, to individuals that would like to speak on non-agenda items. Uh, as I said before, participants will have three minutes to present their comments when recognized by myself. And, uh, this is an opportunity for you to provide comments. Uh, you have three minutes, there will be a timer up there and, uh, we will allocate 15 minutes for this. And we have more than 15 minutes worth of comments, so the remaining comments that I have in front of me will be, uh, recognized and you will have that opportunity under Section 7, public comments, and that is the area for non-agenda, non-voting items. But like I said, because we do not have any voting item comments, I'm going to allocate 15 minutes for, uh, comments that I have in front of me. So I'm going to just take them in order. I would like to recognize, uh, Michael Head, if you would, once again, state your name, address and school district that you reside. And, uh, using a baseball term, uh, and then, on the end, on the on-deck circle is Wendy Fugate, followed by Autumn Frazier, then Whitney Frazier and Jason Scott. Then the rest of the comments will be, uh, recognized at the, at Section 7. So with that, Michael Head.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, Michael Head, I live in Commerce Township, that's the Wall Lake School District, but I'm an employee of the Huron Valley School District. Good evening. Many of you know me and know me well. I'm not one that people would can call confrontational or adversarial, and I think you all know that. My message here tonight is one of advocacy for my profession and hopefully illustrates that loyalty and seniority are not the same thing. This past school year, I made a comment to a student who was entrenched in his phone. You need to live a 3D life, not a 2D one. It was a suggestion to be present in the moment, to be aware of the people around you, to value the presence of humans. I'll come back to that message later. Let me change direction for a moment to talk about some basic truths that every employee in this district knows. First, salaries for employees of this district, district are less than those in neighboring districts. Second, Huron Valley Schools struggles to match salaries in those districts because it's one of the lowest funded districts in the area. Despite these truths, numerous employees have remained in the district for the bulk of, bulk of, if not their entire career. They certainly have had opportunities to explore teaching jobs in other districts. In fact, many have, and no one can blame them for that. But the majority have stuck around even though they make less money than their peers in other districts. Why? The answer varies from individual to individual. Remember, maybe they are members of the very community in which they work. Maybe they have formed a strong connection to individuals in the district, students, coworkers, parents, et cetera. Maybe they value commitment to a cause or an endeavor that surpasses other means. Maybe they consider their legacy and the impact that they have on their community. Or maybe they just consider loyalty to be a core value. As I mentioned earlier, our district is and likely will be in the future, one that offers financial packages that are inferior to neighboring districts. However, there are things an employer, employer can do that make up, make up for those financial constraints. One thing it can do is recognize the potential reasons that employees stay year after year. Some employee benefits cannot be negotiated in contracts, but that doesn't mean that they cannot be considered when making decisions about employees. Has an individual formed a connection with a specific group or a building? Has an individual created a legacy with a group of people? Has an individual made a choice of loyalty to an institution over a desire for more money? I understand many factors go into personnel decisions and I don't know them all. Probably somewhere in the document in this district, there's a column that says something like Lakewood Elementary, fifth grade teacher, and somebody's going to put a check mark next to that. But in a three-dimensional world where you think about the human factor, I would imagine that document reads Phil Fugate, Lakewood Elementary, fifth grade teacher. I'll be starting my 28th year in this district next month. I once was the beneficiary of some people in positions like yours who recognized my loyalty and responded by being loyal to me. That gesture was a three-dimensional one. I hope that current decision makers can acknowledge my peers in a similar fashion, seeing them for the influential impactful, impactful.
It is no. Uh, my name is Wendy Fugate. I'm the proud wife of Phil Fugate, who is a highly effective teacher in your district, but you do not know him. You had no idea that he would have this much support in your community. Did you know that he bought shoes last year for a little boy who was being teased because his shoes were old? Did you know he arranged a clothing drive for a little boy who was desperate for clothes? Did you know that he arranged an entire Christmas for multiple families that were not going to have food or presents? Did you know he dropped off food and water at the door of another, of a mother who was going through a hard time? Did you know he packs extra food and, um, leftovers and snacks every day for students who don't have enough to eat? Did you know he attends students' basketball and football games on Saturdays? He attends their graduations, open houses, and has attended several funerals. He spends his summers grad sailing to find things for his classroom and often picks up things for other teachers in, in the school. Did you know that he worked for five principals and six superintendences and has never had one reprimand or disciplinary action taken? Yet here we are. You've received so many letters and emails from current staff and students and past staff and students telling you the impact that my husband has had in 28 years. I work at a local restaurant and there's not a ship that passes without someone telling me that what my husband has meant to them. My daughter works for a local retailer and encounters people daily that want to ta-talk to her about her dad. We jokingly say that we wanted to get name tags that say, Mr. Fugate's wife and Mr. Fugate's daughter. When my husband received word of his transfer, he called Heather Peeden and inquired if he had offended her in any way. She said no and stated that she was looking forward to working with him because their teaching philosophies were similar. Heather went on to say that Dr. Salah was giving her a fresh start, like they did at Oxbow when they brought in their new principal. Out with the old and in with the new. Human Resources stated that the decision was out of their hands. As a school board, you need to look into what happened at Lakewood in the last three to four years. The amazing teachers held that ship together while it was being attacked by its own administration. The only reason parents and students are basically unaware of the extreme chaos that took place there because of, is because of all of Lakewood's amazing staff. We have seen what happens when you don't like someone. You dismantled an entire school, depriving it of all the help needed for years. Once you achieved your goal and a new principal was hired, help started flowing into the building. We all know that moving Phil has nothing to do with staffing, but rather a move to get rid of him. As Dr. Salah has stated up to several people, we are legally allowed to do it. Doesn't mean you should. This is allowed, if this is allowed, it won't be the end. They will harass Phil until he quits and he will be moved every year until he retires. I have known this man my entire life and I can tell you that there is not a more caring, loving man anywhere and he does not deserve what you are doing to him. My husband's legacy in Huron Valley is set in cement and you will never ruin that. What is your legacy? My husband's agenda has been to provide the most amazing educational experience he can for every student. What is your agenda? Every story has a superhero and a villain, and my husband is definitely the superhero.
Autumn Frazier?
My name is Lisa Boyd. I reside at 6908 Cooley Lake Road. Autumn is unfortunately not able to make it this evening. She's in California, but did have a video she'd like me to play for her. Hopefully I can figure this out.
Hi, my name is Autumn Frazier. I'm here at Lakewood Elementary. And the building union rep at Lakewood Elementary. I sent you guys all an email so you know how and what I feel about this situation, but I just want to tell little things on public record about how abnormal this situation is. And I don't want the board to try to twist it to the, I don't want the administration to try to, to the board and say that this is normal and teachers do get around. This is not normal. This does not happen to highly seasoned veteran, highly effective teachers and impeccable records unless there's something greater going on that they're not telling any of us, and not even telling them. Because it is either targeting them or it's showing that the district is managing their personnel in a very sad way because what we should be doing is we should be putting students first, we should be putting- and we should be putting our families first and our community first. But this decision to move these two veteran teachers is actually doing the opposite and is putting all of those things I just said last. It's one thing when you're a new teacher, a couple years in. You get moved around a lot. That's normal, okay? Couple educators on the board, they can say that. That's not the case with educators. Something deeper is going on, and we all know that. And what we hear, administration, is denying that. But you can't deny it. There's nothing on their record. They have highly effective status. You know, everybody in education always preaches about like high-yield practices, right? Like a high-yield practice, number one, is building relationships with students and families. That's like number one. That is the top one. You cannot have that and have a successful classroom where all of your students are going to be mostly successful. You just can't have that. These two teachers are like top dogs when it comes to something like that. They bring the relationship factor to their families and to their friends. And I know that there was a petition circulating around, and you can see that just on the comments. The comments were absolutely just so touching. And that cannot go unnoticed. It's devastating when you do this to a community where you have two educators that have been so deeply impactful with building their relations with students and families and teaching them. And kids coming back and saying how wonderful they were and how they were their favorite teachers. And then you ship them off to different buildings? Like, what does that say? Who wants to work for a district like that? We have a teacher shortage right now. Who wants to come to Huron Valley Schools when you...
Next, I have on the agenda Whitney Frazier. That was Whitney also? All right, okay. Then Jason Scott.
I'll do here.
Okay, what's your name?
Whitney Frazier.
All right, and what do you think about Mrs. Lesko and Mr. Fugate being moved to a different school?
Sad because they were really good teachers in the past. Like, when I was in 2nd grade, Mrs. Lesko was really nice and caring. And Mr. Fugate is just a good teacher in general. He signs his students and other, like, and his students in his classroom. And I wanted to have him because he was really nice.
How do you think the other kids at Lakewood feel about it? How do you feel about... How do you think the other kids at Lakewood feel about it?
Um, sad too, because he was a really nice teacher, right? His class liked him. I wanted to be...
That's all we have. All right, thank you very much. Jason Scott?
Honorable school board members, how can I make a difference? As a concerned parent, I find myself grappling with that question today. Two years ago, our family chose Huron Valley to school district, drawn by its commitment to the in-person education and many like-minded parents and educators that made a difference during a challenging pandemic. This decision mirrored our educational goals for our children, including my youngest, who is fortunate enough to have Mr. Fugate as a teacher. Recent events such as the displacements of Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko, without disclosed reasoning, raises unsettling questions about the stability of the teaching profession. The implications of these decisions reach far beyond the individuals involved, affecting the future educators and, most importantly, our students. I bring to your attention three crucial points. First, as the role of the school board, as our elected representatives, you have the power and the duty to shape educational vision that mirrors our shared community values. Second, the recognition of teachers' dedication. The sudden reassignment of devoted educators raises significant concerns about how we value the immense contributions and dedication. Lastly, upholding accountability. We must insist on transparency in these decisions affecting our children and teachers, ensuring the best interests are always prioritized. As we deliberate on these matters, I urge you to uphold your duties, ask tough questions, and insist on transparency. This issue is much more about the careers of two teachers. It's about our district's future, our children, and the principles we have... The principles we hold as our community hold dear. So how can I make a difference? By standing here today, expressing my concerns, and urging you, our elected representatives, to act with wisdom and integrity. James Joyce once said, "Mistakes are the portals of discovery." Let's not hesitate to correct our course when needed and ensure we uphold the values that drew us to this district for the sake of Mr. Fugate, Ms. Lesko, our entire community, and, most importantly, our children. Thank you.
We have a little time left. I'm going to allow one more period.
Did I have a timer? I'll try to get through. I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Slaw for this opportunity to speak. My name is Phil Fugate. I'm a teacher here in Huron Valley. I finished my 20th year in the district, all at Lakewood, except for five school events. I was 25 years old when I started here. I was married with three children. I am now 54, with four children and four grandchildren that sit on the way. I've spent more than half my life at Lakewood. I feel like I have grown up here. Lakewood is my home away from home. I've been rated highly effective and effective for every year I can remember. I've been loyal to the district, Lakewood, and the community. I have formed countless relationships with staff, students, parents, and other community members. I believe I have made a positive impact on Lakewood community. So I received an email, not a phone call, not a sit-down meeting, an email with an explanation that made no sense. I was devastated. Here's the email. "Good morning, Phil. We've been finalizing our staffing for the 2023-24 school year. After staffing adjustments and a review of staff certifications, your placement will be at Country Oaks Elementary for the 2023-24 school year. Please let me know your availability for a follow-up conversation." 28 years wrapped up in 44 words in an email. I explained to HR that I finally got ahold of them. That is like dealing with the death in my family. I never wake up and dread going to Lakewood. There are times I don't feel like I'm going to make it through the end of the day, but it's my family, and we always make it work. I told HR that after the summer passes... I'm sorry, HR said after the summer passes, I'm sure that you will have a change of heart. That's somebody that doesn't know me. I will not have a change of heart. I love Lakewood. I am now confronted with the task of moving 28 years of my teaching life to another building to finish the last year of my career. This should only take my wife and I about three weeks to accomplish. One day, I were hoping to finally have a normal summer. We all dealt with COVID and the shutdowns and the mental drain it caused, but we have also dealt with the death of a granddaughter, my father-in-law, and my father over the last three summers, now an involuntary transfer. I've barely slept since I got that email. My wife has barely slept since she got that email. We are dealing with tremendous anxiety. I'm here tonight to ask you to please reverse your decision so we can try to get back to normal. And if you don't reverse this decision, please think hard and long before you do this to someone else. We aren't pawns in a game. We are people. We are teachers. This job is difficult without having to spend summers under immense stress from unneeded transfers. We teach our students. Treat others the way that you'd like to be treated. And that's all I'm asking. Treat Beth and I the way that you'd like to be treated. Thank you for your time.
I have several more citizen participation forms, as I stated before. These will... You will have that opportunity under Section 7, Public Comments, on non-action items. With that, Consent Agenda. We have four exhibits, A through D, who I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items A1 through A4 as presented.
And I'll support that.
Moved by Member Dodd, supported by Member Cotter. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
And Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, unfinished business. A, Board Policy Updates. Exhibit B, Dr. Slaw.
I would ask Mr. Tverner to speak to this one.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Wiseman, Board of Education, members of the community. So this was a conversation we started several months ago, back in May. As you know, the district has engaged with NEOLAs for policy writing and amendments. And so we did receive some recommended changes to board policies in the 2000 and 7000 series. These were reviewed by the TLT Committee and presented to the board for consideration under New Business at the last meeting. So tonight, we're asking for the board to approve Policies 2623, 7540.02, 7540.03, 7540.04, 8305, 8315, as presented.
Any questions?
Yes, I just wanted the title of that.
For sure.
Those.
Uh, let's see. We've got Student Assessment is 2623. 7540.02 is Web Accessibility Content Apps and Services. 7540.03 is Student Technology Acceptable Use Policy.
Okay, I'm good, John.
Yeah.
It wouldn't come up on my screen. That's why I know which ones you're talking about.
Yep.
We went through those.
We did.
Thank you.
I guess for the benefit of the rest of the board, I can... There's just a couple more here. Was the Staff Technology Acceptable Use Policy? And then we had Information Security.
And these were presented at TLT. A discussion was held, and this is our second reading, correct?
Correct.
Seeing no further questions? Yes, Amy.
One question. We have, obviously, an upcoming school year. Will this impact our technology sign-off that we do for parents? And for... I didn't notice anything, but there might be some language we have to change.
Yeah, so there's some tweaks to the language in acceptable use policy. It really is updating. I think there were some references in there to things like BlackBerries, and so it's recognizing some newer technology that has come around that is in there. As far as the onboarding or the back-to-school registration process, those forms reference the policy, so these updates will apply immediately.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? Did I have a motion? Could I have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make the motion to accept the Board Policy Updates as read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Member Vistan, seconded by a Member Ryan. Could I have a roll call, please?
I am a yes. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
And Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Athletic Trainer Service Contracts. Dr. Slaw? Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
B, Lakeland High School, Milford High School Recreational Pool Demolition.
Mr. Van Golkum.
Dr. Slaw.
Mr. Van Golkum.
Thank you. So we have... We still have the leisure pool areas that have not been touched since we closed the pools there a couple years ago now. And so what we're doing is we're removing the pool equipment and setting up some barriers between the competition pool and that area that were currently is vacant upon decisions from the district going forward as to how we will utilize that property going forward. But in the interim, we're going to remove the equipment because we're not going to have that as a leisure pool anymore. And so Bid PAC 9, which is actually the high school work, we had vendors submit quotes to do the work for us in the leisure pool spaces. We brought this to the meeting a month ago. We've discussed it at several Finance and Operations Committees as well as Executive. This is just to go forward with us demoing that space, and we will be utilizing it for storage for now until we determine ultimately what we're going to do with that space as a district.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Once again, we had this information, and there were a few questions that were raised, and you've responded. And Dr. Slaw, you've provided those answers and you responded, and Dr. Slaup, you've provided those answers to those questions back to the rest of the board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the Lakeland High School and Milford High School recreational pool demolition.
Do I have a second?
I'll support that.
You have a motion made by Member Grisemkowski and seconded by a Member Cotter. Could I have a roll call please?
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now Athletic Trainer Service Contracts.
Are you taking this one, Jeffrey, or is it John?
Yeah, I'll take this one as well.
You're both on there.
So we have an ongoing contract for athletic trainer services. They primarily service our athletic teams after school and on weekends for events. This includes the summertime, and so the district publicly bid those services as we do every several years. It was competitively bid. ATI, who has been our partner over the last several years, was the low responsible bidder. And so we're asking the board to approve a contract for them for the next several years. The hours do include some summer hours, which they've been doing over the last couple of years. And this contract is reflective of that. But the price increase from what we've been paying over the last several years is really minimal going forward. So we're happy that we're keeping those costs down while providing athletic services for our students, primarily at the high school, but also for the middle school sports as well. So this was brought up again a month ago under New Business. It's been brought up at several committees, and now we're asking the board for approval of the contract.
Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the Athletic Trainer Services contract as presented.
Thank you, Member. Seconded by Member Grisemkowski. I have a roll call please.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is New Business. We amended the agenda to move petition for reinstatement up to A, and we'll be addressing that first. This is a petition for reinstatement. Usually, we do not have more than one closed session, but tonight we will have two closed sessions. Under the Open Meeting Act, it's permitted by four school districts and boards, such as ourselves, to have discussion as it relates to a few specific circumstances. One of them is on student discipline. And even when a school board is permitted to conduct a closed meeting, the law prohibits taking any action during that closed meeting. As noted under New Business, the board will be acting on this petition for reinstatement at an open meeting. So what I will need is a motion for us as a Board of Education to go into closed session addressing the issue as it pertains to the petition for reinstatement. Once we go into, once that is approved, we will adjourn the public meeting that's being held right now, go into closed session for this specific purpose and only this specific purpose, have a conversation, and then come back and open this meeting back up. And we will start off with a petition for reinstatement. Anybody have any questions regarding that process? Seeing none, could I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion, please.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Member Cotter, seconded by a Member Dodd. Could I have a roll call please?
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We will now go into recess for closed session. We will come back as soon as our discussion is complete.
As I said before, our closed session was for the purpose of the Board of Education to have a closed session as it's for the purpose of discussing student discipline. We've had that opportunity in closed session. We are now in open session and we now have the petition for reinstatement of said student for student discipline. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion for the petition of reinstatement of student A.
Thank you very much. I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Member Cotter, seconded by Member Dimmick as it relates to a motion, a motion to, as it pertains to student discipline. John?
I just want to make sure the record reflects that the motion is for a conditional reinstatement.
Yes, thank you very much. The motion is made as it relates to a conditional reinstatement of said student. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes, I probably should have said that.
Okay, let the record show. All right, thank you very much. Could I have a roll call as it relates to the motion as amended?
Absolutely. Ms. Cotter?
I'm going to be a yes.
Mr. Dimmick?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
And Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next on under new business, fitness center equipment exhibit E.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wiseman. So again, as a part of the 2019 bond program, one of the items that we wanted to consider for upgrade or update would be the fitness center equipment at both Lakeland and Milford High School. This supports primarily the phys ed classes at those high schools as well as the athletic teams who train at our facilities. We did put that out for public bid. We received several bids. The committee is recommending BSN Sports LLC be awarded the bid in the amount of approximately $157,000. We did discuss this at Finance and Operations Committee. We did receive several questions. We have posted those questions to the entire board. And again, this is not asked, we're not asking for approval this evening, but this is a first read under new business so that the board has time to think about this recommendation and vote on it at the August meeting.
The next four items are under new business. They will not be voted on tonight. It will give us an opportunity to support to ask any further clarifying questions to you, Mr. Van Goghtham, on this particular item and for further review at any upcoming standing subcommittee meetings, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any questions right now as you review the documents? Yes, Lindsay?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Where is BSN Sports from?
They're a Michigan-based company. I don't think they're necessarily in the, in the Valley, but they're in Michigan.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none. Next Bogie Lake Campus Water Easement Agreement. Mr. Van Goghtham?
Yeah, so as Ms. Grisemkowski alluded to earlier this evening, under Finance and Operations Committee, one of the requirements for us to continue this work with White Lake Township and partnership is, is a water main easement. And this is for the actual Bogie Lake campus, which includes Lakewood, White Lake, and Lakeland High Schools. There are several areas that the township will need to have access to as they will be the owner-operator of the water line and we will simply be utilizing that water once it's complete. And so this has been reviewed through our legal team. They did not have any additional comments. This has actually been through White Lake Township as well. Again, this is under new business. We'll ask that the board consider that at the August 14th. And ultimately, this will be the last document in theory that we need so we can get some of that worked on in our internal piece through the Bogie Lake campus as the water main is already complete from the township side.
And we have in our documents all the diagrams and the, the location of the easements that we discussed in Finance and Operations.
Correct.
Any other questions? If you do, adjust them to Mr. Van Goghtham over the next couple of weeks. Eagle Resolution Regarding Groundwater.
Yeah, again, so Eagle has requested in the past, we have signed a resolution or the board has that acknowledges that we have groundwater that we're operating under the permit as provided by Eagle for groundwater discharge throughout the district. And so we've reviewed this resolution as well, brought to Finance and Operations Committee, had a discussion about it. We are doing everything right with respect to the groundwater and our treatment of the groundwater. Just a matter of acknowledging that. We are doing everything right with respect to the groundwater and our treatment of the groundwater. Just a matter of acknowledging that through a resolution. I, as far as I can see, it's been several years since we've done this and you know, it's part of our requirements is the permit that we utilize for our groundwater with Eagle and the state of Michigan. So I'm asking the board again to take a look at this. If there's any additional questions, do not hesitate to reach out to me, but we would like to second approve at the August meeting so that we can forward this on to Eagle. We're active. We have a permit. We're doing everything we need to with our groundwater. It's just a matter of, you know, finalizing a resolution that shows support of the permit and the work that we're doing in partnership with Eagle.
So it's important to note that we are in compliance and we are doing everything we are required to do. It's more of a, our file is not complete because we have not acted on a resolution.
Correct.
And this is, this resolution is important because the storm water, if we were polluting, and we're not, but if we were, it would impact surrounding lakes to Oak Valley. And so one of the reasons that we go to the trouble of doing this is because we are being good, responsible, responsible organization environmentally because we know that this has a great impact on our environment.
Yes, Laura?
I'm just going to tell everybody what Eagle stands for because you know, that's what I like to do. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, formerly Michigan Department of Environmental Quality is the principal department of the U.S. State of Michigan for environmental issues. So that's what Eagle is, if anybody was curious.
I'll quiz you on that next one. Fortis Group LLC Contract, Dr. Sala?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. For the last couple of years, we have been supplementing our support with local law agencies in the community using Fortis Group LLC, who's been providing some private security for us. We started our engagement with Fortis Group shortly after the Oxford tragedy. We started with one private security. We now have three and we are utilizing them strategically throughout the district where we have additional needs or a larger campus or less support in a particular building for any variety of reasons. So the Fortis Group contract that you received in your board packet on Thursday is for you to review and consider two options. Option one would be a one-year agreement and option two would be a three-year agreement. The hesitancy in bringing to you this evening a three-year agreement is the funds that are utilized for this service comes from a state categorical that the legislature, that we were not sure if the legislature was going to adopt and renew for additional years. It appears that we will receive an additional, something like $800,000 to support safety and security in the district for the next few years. But the governor has not signed that yet. So I'm, we're just a little bit hesitant to bring that three-year option to you. So what I'm saying this evening is if the governor signs the, the State Budget Act, which I believe she will, and we're being told that should happen at any moment, then, then next month you would see a recommendation for a three-year contract with Fortis Group because we can use those monies beyond year one. If they were not to sign, we do have some, some dollars left from the previous school year that we could use to fund Fortis for at least one more year. So I would expect a three-year agreement to come before you, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for why there isn't a specific recommendation at this point. And we also wanted to do two readings so we didn't want to prove this into September. We want to get it done before the school year starts.
Any questions? Yes, Laura?
Well, and I just love to talk about advocacy when I get an opportunity and this is one of the reasons why advocacy that we do as a school board is so important with the state of Michigan. Because otherwise it's a matter of taking dollars out of the classroom for private security or, but to keep our kids safe or putting dollars into these educational materials that are so important in our teachers. So I applaud the folks at the state of Michigan for putting this into the budget. Fingers crossed in the next three days that the governor doesn't get out of pen and line item this. But it's something we think we need to keep advocating for, just like we do as it relates to categoricals for transportation, school lunches, safety and security. These are all things that are needed in order for us to run the business, but shouldn't necessarily come out of the teaching and learning dollars that we get as our regular allotment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. Sala, you'll keep us informed as it relates to the budget process and how this impacts this particular item. All right. That is all as it relates to new business. Now we are on subsection seven, public comments. As I stated before, participants will have three minutes to present their comments when recognized. You will have that full three minutes and we have a number of addition, a number of comments cards in front of me and each of you will have your allotted time. Please state your name and address and the school district that you reside in. We'll start off with Lisa Blackwell, followed by Molly.
Good evening. It's a little bit different being on the side of the podium, I'd say. I just want to, I want to start off by thanking the board for their service to this district. I know it's, it's a really hard job and it's a thankless job. And I also want to thank Huron Valley Schools. I have five beautiful children go through this district. I have one in the Air Force, a county sheriff, and two executives and one in nursing school. So good job here on Valley Schools. Thank you guys so much for everything that you've done for my family and my kids. If you'll just indulge me for a minute, I'm just going to start with an anecdotal story. One of the most beloved presidents in the history of this country made one of the biggest political mistakes in the history of this country. And despite the mistake, he had one of the highest approval ratings of any president in the history of this country because he admitted his mistake. I'm going to address administration and Dr. Sala because I know the board has no control over what we're talking about tonight. But I want to say you guys got this wrong. You need to own it. You need to fix it and we need to move on. And you need to repair your brand because I'm telling you it's damaged right now. In my 13 years as a board member, I found myself in many of these similar situations, a little bit different, way more than I'd like to remember. I can honestly say in front of God and this entire boardroom, I made the wrong decisions. I got it wrong and I have to live with it. I ignored that voice in the back of my head saying, this is wrong. How can this be right? How can all the parents and students be wrong? How can all of the parents and students be wrong? How can all the parents and students be wrong? I succumb to the standard rhetoric. We're too far down a road to go back now. It will look like we're not supporting administration if we change our mind. Parents and students don't have all the information. We heard that tonight. This is good for kids. These teachers are toxic to the environment. Got it wrong, guys. We all know you guys have the right to make this decision. No one's, no one's disputing your rights or the law. But just because you can, doesn't mean you should. I just want to talk quickly about the filters you have to put this through. We put it through, is it good for the kids? Of course, two rock star teachers, whoever gets them will be blessed. I'm talking about how you treat employees in this district. Notifying them via email after school recess, not even a personal conversation. That's not Huron Valley. That's not our culture. If this is what we've become, it's bad.
Molly? M-A-L-I.
Hi, I'm Molly Malazuski and I believe Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko should not be leaving Lakewood Elementary. I have been in both of their fifth and second grade classes. Mr. Fugate is the most funny, easygoing person ever and Ms. Lesko was the most patient, kind, understanding person to ever step foot on this planet. The most confusing part about this change is that there's no reason to move these two teachers. I mean, if Country Oaks and Oak Valley needed more teachers, why don't they just hire more teachers, not take some from Lakewood? Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko create bonds with students that last forever. For example, Mr. Fugate lets pass students come help out whenever they want after school. Another example is that I still email Ms. Lesko to this day. I had Ms. Lesko in second grade and now me going into seventh grade, still talking to her. Just think the two teachers that impacted you the most, leaving you and never seeing you again. These teachers have been there for me whenever I needed them. The only reason I think they are transferring these teachers is because they're allowed and stand up for what they believe in, like they are doing right now. So please do not move these two teachers. Thank you.
Jennifer Calhoun. Followed by Nathan Boyd. Jennifer Calhoun. Followed by Nathan Boyd.
Hi. I'm supposed to, oh, Jennifer Calhoun, 9120 Eagle Road. I live in Davisburg. I'm Holly School District. I chose to bring my kids to Huron Valley Schools based on a lot of things. I love the school. I love the teachers. I love, I'm a positive person. I love all the great things, the positive things the school district has done for my kids. My son just graduated 2023 Lakeland and my daughter is going in as a sophomore. Both of my kids, I decided to just put a little positive flair and just say something nice about the teachers because they were great teachers to my kids. I'm going to tell you, because my kids wanted me to say these, so that's what I'm, I'm coming from their mouth. So anyways, when Kayden was, I think it was about fourth grade, he didn't even have Mr. Fugate. He had both Fugate and Lesko and so did my daughter. So he had a kid that kind of drove him crazy all through school. Let me be quick. Sorry, talk slow. Anyways, this kid teased him and bothered him and harassed him for years. Finally, I told him, I said, one day, you know, you're just going to end up snapping. Hopefully nothing happens. Well, he did. He chucked his lunchbox at him. He ended up in the principal's office. We always taught our kids to never be in the principal's office because my father-in-law was a principal, my mother-in-law was a teacher. And he was in there. He was crying. I was at pickup. I had to go in and Fugate talked him off the edge. He wasn't even in his class. And Kayden got in the car and he goes, Mom, he goes, I'm upset because I, I disappointed the teachers. I disappointed the principal. I disappointed you. So that was my first interaction with Fugate. Both my kids had Ms. Lesko at a younger age. So it's, you know, they're younger. They're not impacted as much. But Kayden did say, Mom, he goes, she taught me to straighten up and to not mess around in class. And, and for him to say that, he goes, I knew that I was, you know, done. I couldn't mess around in class. Anyways, I'm going to read their list here real quick. Let me second it. So Kayden said, fifth grade camp. I broke my wrist a week before fifth grade camp. They told him not to go to fifth grade camp. Fugate did everything in his power to make sure Kayden was safe. I took him. He had a great time. He didn't stay the night. And Fugate says to him, you don't want to stay anyways. Those beds are nasty. He taught him about classic rock, rock, which is his favorite. He taught me a lot about life. He taught me to be a leader. He taught me not to be selfish and put other people before yourself. He goes above and beyond for everyone. He was a great role model. He kept it real. He always made him feel comfortable. He played games. He learned math, history. He began to love history and he taught him how to multiply. He said, I want to continue to talk to him for the rest of my life and the rest of his life. He invited him to his open house. He showed up to his open house. And he gave him his football jersey because he inspired him the most out of all his teachers. Kylie, oh, okay. Thanks.
Nathan Boyd, followed by Andrea.
Good evening. My name is Nate Boyd. I live on 6908 Blue Lake Road. I have three children enrolled in Huron Valley Schools, ranging from fifth grade all the way up to 10th grade. All three of my children have had, have had Mrs. Lesko and two of which have had Mr. Fugate. And I'm frustrated. I'm shocked that two senior members with over 20 years' experience each are transferred without a very detailed explanation, no explanation. It frustrates me. I can only imagine how it impacts the life of these two teachers that have been pillars at Lakewood Elementary for over 20 years each respectively. It's I think that it's a well, let me, let me switch gears for a minute. I was walking out of school last year with who was a fifth grader at the time and I'm sorry, it was two years ago. It was a sixth grader this past year. I was walking out of school with him and chit-chatting with him, asking how his day went. And he looks at me with all the honesty and candidacy that a fifth grader can have. He said, you know, Mr. Fugate is the only teacher that teaches me anything about life. At the time, I just laughed. It's like something that comes from a fifth grader, but there's a lot of truth to it from him. There was truth in his voice and his meaning. And it concerns me that, you know, we take two teachers that have been with this Lakewood for that long and, and transfer them without, I guess with, without a lot of concern for the long-term, you know, support of the community. I think it's a short-term resolution and I think it's damaging to the culture of the school. So again, the school board and everyone else here present, I plead with you guys to, to think about this decision very carefully. To weigh how it impacts the students who have two beloved teachers at the school that are going to be greatly missed and how it affects the teacher. Thank you.
Andrea? Andrea S. Schumansky? And then Jessica Atheak is up next. Andrea?
Yep, I'm Andrea Schumansky. I live at 2197 Ridge Road. I am in Huron Valley. Good evening. My name is Andrea Schumansky. I live in White Lake and my daughter just finished her kindergarten year at Lakewood Elementary. I've lived in the area most of my life and I'm a graduate of Lakeland High School. I've always displayed pride for Huron Valley School District. That is until this year. I've always been in support of public schools. However, like many, COVID gave me reason to pause and reassess. With my daughter about to start kindergarten, I wanted to make the best decision for our family. With so many unknowns surrounding COVID, I decided Cheryl Stockwell Academy would be the best and I enrolled for there. Making the right decision means being well-informed. As such, I made the choice to attend an open house for parents of incoming kindergarteners hosted at Lakewood. I was so impressed after listening to Mrs. Brower and the kindergarten teachers speak and witness their passion. I made the decision to revoke my daughter's enrollment at CSA and I enrolled her at Lakewood. Needless to say, I was extremely disappointed to learn of Mrs. Brower's resignation as the principal. After all, she was one of the main reasons I decided to enroll my daughter at Lakewood. Let's be frank, we all know someone with her experience doesn't just step down mid-year without good reason. Couple months later, there was an incident with a student who brought a weapon on the bus into school. Like other parents at Lakewood, I received a very generic letter providing vague details requesting we as parents put trust in the administration to do what's right. I was so thankful for the new parents I had connected with throughout the school year. Otherwise, I would have had no idea what really transpired. This led me to eventually communicate directly with the superintendent. In his initial voicemail, he indicated he was on top of the situation and tried to pacify me by stating he too has children and knew how I was feeling. Really? Not a chance. Don't patronize me. He repeatedly told me he was bound from sharing more information, but to trust he's doing what's right and in the best interest of the children and staff. what's right and in the best interest of the children and staff. In April, a new principal was hired, Mrs. Peeden. She accepted the position, choosing to uproot her family, moving them to Michigan, and was never even given the courtesy or respect to disclose any of the current issues. She was put in the inferno. She was now responsible for taking charge of Lakewood Elementary. Not to mention, relations were so bad at Lakewood, I've been told a mediator had to be brought in to facilitate talks between the district and the staff. All of these items have the same general theme, a lack of trust and support from school administration. The very same people who are, we are, who we are supposed to hold in a high regard in trusting them with making the best decisions for our children. As a parent, I am a voice of my child. I will decide what's in her best interest. I will not fail her. I'm extremely thankful for our community and will continue to advocate for transparency and respect.
All right, Grace. I think it's J-A-M-B-E-C-H. Grace, and then Dr. Julie Bedford would be next.
Hello, my name is Grace Jenner. My fifth grade teacher, Mr. Fugate. I never had Ms. Lesko, but I know she's an amazing teacher of Lakewood Elementary. I speak here today about these two incredible teachers and why they should not leave the school. Mr. Fugate is one of my favorite teachers, not only teaching school subjects, but also teaching about life. He can make anyone laugh. I was also happy to go to school at the beginning of the day. I only have one question to ask. Why are you moving Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko, two kind-hearted people? There's a, so, they're so nice to all the teachers and students of Lakewood Elementary. I'm usually a quiet person, but Mr. Fugate had lightened my fear, and I had raised my hand lots more. I know both of these remarkable teachers don't want to move. They want to have siblings of previous students and new stunning students. These are the reasons why Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko should not move schools.
Hello, my name is Dr. Julie Bedford, and I have thirty-some years' experience with Huron Valley, first as a student, as a teacher, and then as a principal. I was lucky enough to be the principal at Brooks Elementary and at Lakewood Elementary for seven years. Phil and Beth were members of my staff. I could take all my time up here, and I could tell you how wonderful they were, how they went the extra mile for the families. I think others have told you that. But what I'm here to talk about is Huron Valley I knew, the Huron Valley I loved. And our mantra for many years was "We Do More With Less." And why? Because we value our employees. We are a family. We take care of each other. Teachers had oodles of opportunities to leave this district, but there was a point in time when our loyalty and our teachers who stayed was a great number because of that value, because of that mantra. So when I heard that these two were moved with an email, I'm not here to debate how you did it, why you did it, you're right, that happens all the time, but it's the manner in which it happened, to send a cold, heartless email that quite frankly had a bogus reason as to why this was happening, and to not have the courage to sit down and have the conversation. Leadership, leadership, I was leader for twenty-some years, and it requires difficult conversations, and they're not fun, and I hated having them every time I had to have them. But you know what? It took courage, and good leaders sit down and they have them. Those two deserve the truth, and they deserve that conversation, and they didn't get it. And in a time when retention and getting teachers, I mean loyalty, come on, let's be honest, teachers are leaving the field left and right. At a time where that is critical, it is imperative that Huron Valley gets back to the roots of who they were. We do more with less. We value our people, we take care of them, we are family. Like Lisa Blackwell said, "Own it. Be courageous, be the leader that you should be, and take it back and correct it." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Jessica Mathiak, two-nine-seven-zero Love Court, Huron Valley Mom. Um, I had a speech prepared here, but unfortunately, I was very bewildered by the opening remarks from Dr. Sala this morning, so I did, or this afternoon, I did need to make some adjustments In regards to the folks that we have here tonight, we have an opportunity to make a choice. I know you had things prepared, but a great thing that we could have done differently here is to read the room. These folks here are here because they love these teachers and they love this district, not because they wanna be here in the middle of their summer, that these folks are so well deserved to have. They're here because an injustice occurred, and rather than own it, we give illegal jargon and rhetoric that we all could have very well easily read online, and we didn't need a lesson in that. We have highly educated folks here in this room, as well as online, watching this right now. So I wanna make a couple of points here. We don't need to continue to be out of touch, we've shared those concerns repeatedly, so making sure that we have a humanity approach with compassion is extremely imperative to how this district is gonna move forward. And maybe it's not felt that way because you don't live here, but we do. This is our family. These are people that we go to church with, that we hang out with, that we play sports with, that we love. And to act as bean counters essentially by making these decisions, same thing happened to Amanda Bala last year, so this is not the first time that we've had involuntary transfers disrupt a school. We don't need to continue to assert dominance and demean and condescend to our audience. We are all very highly educated people, and we understand, and where we are missing the bar is with compassion and humanity. When we talk about politics being involved in these decisions, we don't mean Rs. and Ds. We mean internal politics, games, things that don't make sense, like an email to two You guys need to understand that some of the messaging in the community is that we can come here, but nobody will listen, that they don't care, they're gonna make the decisions that they wanna make, and that's kind of evident, watching people's faces tonight or hearing some of the information that was shared with us at the, right out of the gate, it makes that sentiment echo. And I wanna be Pollyanna and say, "No, they'll listen, they'll partner with us, they'll collaborate, they'll hear what we have to say," but it doesn't feel that way. It doesn't feel that way when, instead of saying, "You know what, guys, let's take a look at this, these decisions are hard, and no one wants to make difficult decisions like this," but that wasn't what we were meant with this evening. Integrity is needing to be first and foremost, or we just...
All right, that's the end of the public comments that I have before me. Next on the agenda is good and welfare. Good and welfare. Yes, Mr. Dimick.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for being here. My name is Jacob Dimick, I guess you can see up there. We had, as was mentioned earlier, we did have our vote on the third for the teacher's contract, and I didn't really elaborate too much, I voted no on it at that point, but I didn't go into great detail. Um, I wanted to just give a teeny bit more information and just, um, just to say, the reason I voted no was because I felt like we weren't putting enough emphasis just on the class size, and I would like to see more of that in the future. I understand it's a difficult situation, I fully support our teachers, and I see the job you guys have to do is beyond difficult at times, and I wanna give you every tool you have, and I know that less students sometimes does equate to being able to manage that classroom a little bit better, and everybody agrees with that, we're not, it's just trying to figure out how to get the dollars in the right place. And also, I wanted to lastly touch on was just, um, kind of the theme of the night has been community, uh, reaching out. So I do read the emails, we all do, we get them. There's a tendency to let the board president speak for us because as a one of seven, if we all have different messages, it will get kind of confusing, so it may seem like we're not responding to everything, but I mean, I have, I think I have eighteen, twenty emails here on Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko, and on class size, I have a half a dozen or so, just, this is just since the last board meeting, and I have a tendency every month to print out those emails that I do get, just to see if there's, if the theme is consistent, and we discuss it. These things come up behind closed doors, a lot of this, uh, I have monthly meetings with the superintendent and the president, and these things are, there is some back and forth, there's definitely dialogue amongst the board, and there's definitely not always a firm agreement on everything, even though that might be what you saw like tonight, for instance, on all the votes, but we do have that open dialogue amongst us, and it's, I am actually happy to say that our board is pretty, um, pretty, doing pretty well in many respects, there's just a few areas where I think, you know, we definitely have room for improvement, so I think, just wanted to kind of reach out to the community and let you know where my thoughts in my head were at with regards to that. So thank you.
Any other good and welfare? Amy?
I want to, um, thank you for coming out tonight. Um, this is part of the democratic process, right? We are your elected officials, we, we, well, some of us, but we all agree that, um, Dr. Sala is our superintendent, which means he is in charge of our operations. As Board of Education members, we are in charge of the governance. I wanna especially thank Whitney and Molly and Grace. I know it is very difficult to stand up in front of this large of a group and speak from your heart. I will be honest with you, ladies, it is difficult for me as an older person to speak from my heart with a group this large, so well done to you. Thank you for every parent who has sent us an email, thank you for every parent who has stood up here and, and, um, really displayed their love for Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko. I will tell you, um, if I were in your shoes, I would say the same thing about our second grade teacher and our fifth grade teachers. I believe that Huron Valley, um, like Dr. Bedford said, um, I truly believe we have always done more with less, sadly, right? I would, I would like for us to do more with more. And I always, I've always believed in what our teachers do day in and day out. I have four students, I have four children which have been students of Huron Valley. I would love to tell you that Mr. Fugate and Ms. Lesko are the only teachers that are like this, and you at Lakewood are the luckiest kids in the world. You are super lucky. But I'm gonna tell you something, Country Oaks is lucky because they have Beth Lesko's and Phil Fugate's there too. Spring Mills is lucky because they also have them. All of our teachers are amazing human beings that have always done more with less. Now, that is not to say anything, uh, less of Phil or Beth, it's not. You guys are amazing people, as evidenced by all of the parents that have come out today, and as evidenced by all of the emails that were received, and the almost fifteen hundred people on the change.org survey, right? That says something. As a board, we have to take into consideration all of this. I cannot guarantee you an outcome, rather. I will say this, I appreciate you being here tonight. I appreciate you raising your concerns here. That's how we work collaboratively. We may not always, and I will guarantee you, we will not always agree on everything. It's impossible. We all have our own opinions, but if we are working collaboratively, if we are open, if we are willing to listen to one another, we will go a lot further as a district. I thank you for coming here tonight. I thank you for spending the last two and a half hours with us. I know it's not easy, but I appreciate what you've done here tonight. Thank you.
Under good and welfare? Seeing none.
I'll go one more time, from now on, I'm just gonna let Amy speak first because she does it so much better than I do, so.
Anything else?
Seeing none. As I said earlier, there are certain aspects of Open Meeting Acts that allow us to go into closed session. We went into closed session for reinstatement as it pertained to a student in the district. Now we are going to go into closed session regarding negotiations, which is an area that's allowable under the Open Meeting Act. Once this closed session is completed, as it pertains to negotiations, there will not be any further, uh, work of the board, no votes being taken, and we will immediately go into adjournment. So closed session is as it relates to negotiations, and I will repeat again, once we go into closed session, unlike what we just did where we went into closed session and then came back, this closed session will follow with an immediate adjournment of this meeting, and no action will be taken. So with that, could I have a recommendation to go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations?
I'll recommend that we go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations.
I'll second.
All right, move by Member Dodd, seconded by Member Ryan. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Miss Dodd.
Yes.
Miss Ryan.
Yes.
Miss Griszkowski.
Yes.
Miss Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
And Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I also want to say, thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. I respect what you said, I heard what you said, and we will work collaboratively to continue making Huron Valley Schools the very best they can be. So, thank you very much.